Okay. You're on.
All right, we're starting a little late tonight. It is 6:42. Just reading our site to get rolling here.
Yeah, for open public session.
So we're gonna start with the road agents report. John Thompson.
Hello, how are you? We pretty much have just basically been playing in the mud, trying to muck up some scots and get people wetting up. We're wetting now because of the temperature change, but it's still pretty rough.
You doing some pothole patching?
Yeah, we did a patching last Friday.
It's much better out here.
Yeah. So we did that, 'cause we're on a patch now, so we gotta get some more traction, grab some more.
There's still a little more to do on Plank Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, like I said, we gotta get some patch. Not quite sure who's open yet with it.
Oh, yeah.
Probably put a pad on the list to color it up today, uh, this week. Other than that, we've been hard on our way at the bridge, stuff that we've been doing. Been looking at the elbow pulling plans and going over those. We intend to stop working down at the bridge physically tomorrow.
That's last street.
That's the last street, yeah. One of our first things is we're gonna house the bridge in, get it topped out underneath. We'll try to clean back some of the dirt on both the bucket ends and then we're gonna take a survey, whether we take the railings off, the gab railings off before, or put our jersey barriers in till the last day, whatever's gonna be convenient, best when you get done here, you look and kind of figure that out with that plan. We're just local, bit molding, getting things organized. Keith, we got different things on different pallets sorted out, ready to go. We're gonna start loading the trailer probably tomorrow, 'cause all the wood stuff we're gonna lay out, we kind of gotta figure out, you know, the deck, how we're gonna use it, so we'll load it. Load it, we're gonna use the last and come off. So that's pretty much where we're at there.
Have they been notified, the people up there that were?
The, no. What's gonna hap- what we're hoping is going to happen is tomorrow, we're gonna make those connections up there with the residents, but I hope we don't talk too much like along with you guys. We're temporarily shooting for next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, to call Bridge of Fire. We have been in contact with fire department, Joe's been, Keith's been with police department to make arrangements on what they would like us to do for safety issues for them when the bridge is gonna be out. We met with Stephen Varden down there, we came up with a temporary bridge idea, so we'll keep pedestrians going, both for the residents and us for working. We're just gonna need two of the strings at some point in, we're gonna sheet it with plywood with the temporary railing, and as we put the new ones in on the other side, get a couple in, we'll just set this box over, and then when we're ready to deck it, plus we'll take, it's gonna go in an echo session, we're building an echo session, we'll take the first eight foot out, so we've still got a path in, and just we'll pack this right out over the bridge. And also, so moving on to like elbow pond, we picked the plans up from my job last Friday. We put them up this morning and started powering around at it, doing a breakdown of materials and so on and so forth. Keith done some calling around this afternoon. Needless to say, the blocks that we have there, Mitch called, was the ones that we got them from, they no longer use that form, so they're a little different, so he was gonna call around to see if we could get some of them someplace else that would match what we already had. If not, then Mitchy said they would, they would bring it all full out and patch it up and make us what we need, but other than that, that would be special art for them, so it's something.
So we're gonna reuse the blocks, we're gonna reuse the blocks that are there, but we need more to go, to go another five feet deeper, right?
Right, there's a, there's like, yeah, like you said, there's not quite half enough there already, but there's still, there's quite a few, it'd be a shame to have them there.
I don't know if anything's damaged, they just got shifted.
What we can see hasn't looked like it has, but what's underneath where you did, we haven't, we're in bulletproof, so we're doing it. So that's where that is. What else can we do?
As far as getting ahold of somebody on the, to drive the sheet in or whatever, took we, what do you figure, water?
Yeah, um, like I said this morning, it was the first time, we're just starting to lay it out and breaking it apart and see, see what had to, where we had to go with it. So hopefully the next time we meet, we'll have a fair length of air, break down, come back to you guys, whether it's, what direction we wanna go or what we're gonna do. Over on Shirley Street, we've, we've been contacting Todd back and forth with Joseph about the design, we haven't yet made the contact with the right person, 'cause I guess it's just a matter now of the title connecting for design over there. The rough plan that we have talked about with the engineer so far, I was over at the concrete place, precast place the other day, and I was rolling around and found everything there, turned back, it's all stock. So it's just a matter of careful, you know. So other than that, that's about what we're.
Do you, I've got one question.
Yeah.
Bottom of College Road, that big dip?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to fix that before you get there.
I've contacted the GMI guys that are supposed to come out and meet with me, take a look at that. But that's kind of where that ledge starts in there, so I don't know what they're gonna write there.
They didn't crack the asphalt?
No, but it may have had a dip there.
Yeah, well, yeah, you don't wanna hit that.
Oh, no, the first time I did it, yeah.
It's a little ripply, a little.
Didn't take a good turn around, see what was going on, that's for sure. Nighttime, I don't know what, but, yeah, Jeff from GMI, I spoke with him last week, I spoke with him again today, he's supposed to be coming up to take a look at that. To see what we're gonna do and do to avoid that in the future.
On Poplar Ave, I just had a question. Do you think we should talk with, or you talk with the water precinct to try to get this narrowed down, if everybody's opinion keeps changing on this, and?
Well.
Or maybe we can sit down without having a bunch of other people in a room?
As you say, maybe we sit down with Toby and Mike, and I'm not sure who the other water commissioner is and.
That's all we have.
It's only him, now, two, just two.
Sit down with those guys and see where, where we're at, where they're at in the planning.
Curb by your son.
My, my deputy spoke about it earlier today, and, well, as far as repaid the whole road, it made it beautiful.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't, I think that that's right, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, but as far as designing these basins and putting them in, we're not gonna be disturbing a lot of new hot tub.
Right.
We just patch in what's there, what we're destroying, take out, but as far as, as the upgrade, like I said, imagine, they may be, I mean, it's a pretty big project for a few people, they may have to.
Yes, I.
Four, five, six years to even do it.
I just think it would be a, a good idea for us to kind of actually sit down and.
Just try to get on the same page.
You know, have the neighbors there, which is fine, but it's just, there's confusion and stuff, just to try to make a plan, because me and Dave talked a little bit too, and I think that the water district might not have the money, or might not wanna go, you know, spend a hundred grand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars to go in a room to do this.
Right, but they also, they also may have a thought and a plan, sort of in the back of their head of what they wanna do, and if we're all on that same page, we could make sure whatever we did was clear to them, so that later on, if we create an issue.
Right.
I think, I think that would be a very important thing to, to get together with.
As I was approached about, well, if you're gonna do the road and you're gonna do the, you know, the systems going in, should we do them all at the same time, should we push it off, and, and basically put Band-Aids on, and, you know, I think, let's sit down just like you were saying, and, and just, you know.
I think, I think what I said to the manager earlier, if we put these systems in, or recheck the bases, they're, they're free and clear, they're out of their way, it's all gonna work for us. Once those structures are in the ground, the Band-Aid should be on the top of the hot top and the patching back around, because, well Chuck knows, those basin caps, you just, you pull them off, if you wanna raise the road, you put one inch brick or a two inch brick and you mount them up and up you come, or you take usually, I don't know if everybody does, but I usually finish up originally with a couple rolls of small stuff, so that you can, or you can pull that out too. So, I mean, that would be the part that I do the Band-Aid on, so the structure's all good, and you're taking care of your water problem until that time comes.
Do we knew, do we know those basins are out of the way, that pipe now, do you know where that pipe runs, the source?
I know.
I guess that's.
By accident, I know where one section of that pipe is, but again, it's, it was by accident and kind of got the angle that it was coming from and the angle that it was going, but.
Right, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure, like, it's amazing, but what those guys do know, I mean, you would think, for no maps and just stuff passed down from guy to guy, it doesn't have a job going, they really have.
Well, sit down with them and try to make a plan to solve this.
Right.
So, and I think always, should we wait for the engineer, situation as far as drainage?
Um, maybe, maybe, I think, I think the, the perk test and the water table, I think that's all just formality, I mean, we're all pretty sure, pretty positive that everything's okay. So now, before we met with the engineers, if we met with the water precinct and had an idea of what they might be thinking, what were they making, the engineers are gonna throw all suggestions, I mean, we're gonna throw all we got in mind, and we could say, oh, the water precinct, you know, in the near future is thinking about this or that, so.
Well, yeah, we should do that, then, we should have a trend of line meeting up and announce probably sooner than later, so we can.
Yeah.
Move forward.
Been pretty quick when I have to start picking up the cemeteries and brush and all the crap that resides.
You've got a half a summer at work for you.
I just told you, half a summer's work, I know. Yeah. But the snow's melting pretty quick in the big cemetery, so it's not gonna be long, they'll dry it up and we'll get in there and get them cleaned up.
We won't lock the gates, I mean, unlock the chains until we're sure it's dry, enough for people to drive on.
Yeah, but we can get in there and walk around, get a jump on, throw any crap off there, that stuff, try to put things back to order.
For a curveball, actually, we're going back to elbow, we got, you know, obviously, we're, we're talking, you know, some bids from the outside, as well as taking a look at what our capabilities are, so you've got a pretty good idea of who you're gonna be approaching and.
You mean phone bids, contacting them, yeah.
Okay.
Couple of those, pretty easy.
And, you know, our, our part of it, I guess, what we, the town can do and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think, I think that's kind of what we're in the process of trying to break down the storm and getting that together. Again, even if, even if we find a couple of three places that sell in blocks, the, the adjust to what we want, they already make them, well.
Yeah, we're ahead of the game.
Let's see which, which guy wants, 'cause there's, there's quite a bunch of them at the end of the day, I mean, it's not just a few.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a copy of this, John?
Nope.
One of the other things, I don't know, I'll look up all the things, I guess, I guess there's, somebody's brought to our attention that some of the bee receivers need a maintenance, I hope we only, you wanna?
You have the agenda?
Plank Road. So I guess just to make you.
Switch Road.
Oh, Switch Road, excuse me, Switch Road. You were gonna contact the gentleman from?
I was, I talked to John though, and he explained some things to me, it makes sense.
When the beaver, he has the collar, and the beaver to see the unit comes out in front to protect it like this.
Yeah.
And then you see it, and it's all garing up in front of us, and that's actually what the purpose of it is, because what there is is another pipe underneath.
Right.
That comes out to another box out here, so even after this is all plugged up, there's usually a pipe similar in size that runs down underneath, so the water feeds through. And yes, we, we do clean these once or twice a year, depending on what they need, but it's usually a better time of year, 'cause it's a way there to climb in, wire around, get your crap out, and usually around the morning, maybe we do them, usually in the fall, leaves and stuff aren't that bad, it does the flow, but the brush and the stakes will get, it's be forming, they'll pull it all out.
But the fence at the end that you're up to see.
Yes, usually.
Is designed to work properly, even if there are leaves and things in it, so I didn't know that.
And that, that fence is what the design is for the distraction.
Right.
Pull the beaver away.
Right.
Cause you're packing it in here and not realizing what's going on.
And I think that may be what people are seeing.
Very close and personal last fall, remember, for the one thing I.
You're very right. Almost kissed the beaver, right?
So that was good, and then, I guess we need to talk about, what else is on here?
We need to do Ed's mailbox thing.
We'll do that one next.
Yep, 'cause that needs to be done, while John's here.
Yep.
So, Mr. Becker?
Aye. So let's start with that, the road crew has filed like crazy this winter. I'll stand up, if someone's gonna be there.
You can have my chair.
No, no, it's only a minute. And they've worked long hours, and I left one morning at four o'clock in the middle of a twelve inch snowstorm, and Maple Street was just as clear as Route 11 was. So kudos for, for the job they're doing. My mailbox is shattered and wrecked and can't be put back together again, and it felt like they were aiming for it, 'cause it got hit every time this winter, so Mark and John came, they took pictures, and I think we've reached an equitable solution. The road crew's gonna come and dig a hole, and you're gonna send me thirty-five dollars, and I'm gonna go buy a pressure treated post, and I'll build a structure like Stephen Varden has down the street, that's, he can step back far enough and the post will come out and mailbox will hang, and that'll satisfy everybody. So that's the solution that we talked about when they were over here, and I just wanted, I had a chance to talk to John, and so I'm all happy if that happens. Okay?
We need to wait a few weeks till, until.
Yeah, I'd like you to come by, by, by April tenth.
If the snow banks go.
If the snow. So, right now, right now, I've got the mailbox strapped to the top of one of the concrete monitor boxes, so that's, that's holding it up. Okay, that's all right, so you'll send me a check for thirty-five dollars?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'll hear from John as soon as he's able to come, no later than the tenth of April, or if he can't come by the.
He'll hear from you, the call tenth.
I promise you'll hear from him. And then I won't have to be calling wires every storm. How many times did I call you?
A lot. I lost track.
That was much easier than you all thought it was gonna be, wasn't it?
I was disappointed.
I, I blew off steam when they came. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Not a problem.
All right, so that one's out of the way, we solved that one. Says Conservation Committee's Member in White Oak Pit, I think me and Dave talked a little bit, and.
Bill was there.
Bill and Mark, and I, we don't own it yet, so there's no sense in worrying about the setbacks for the wetlands or anything until we own the property.
I responded, we responded.
Right.
Uh, when they came out, we responded last Friday, saying, sit tight until we own it, let's, let's not jinx it, and that seems to have satisfied them, and they understand the stuff.
It's, they're worried about the setbacks, how it's falling and.
Yeah, right.
Basics set up, which I understand, that's what they do.
That's, that's.
But until we get surveyed, we know where everything is, and based on the history of that property and everything we've gone through, I don't, I suppose.
Better just keep going forward for now, right?
I should say, yes.
Yeah.
I take it personally now, it's been two years.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I think that's.
We need a convenient time to meet with John, too.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to meet at sometime, John, I'd have you the first one to come in and talk about the road agent deal. Our plan is to kind of, we'd like, we'd like to give you a good hour, we're not gonna meet, I don't know if anybody's told you, but what we've come up with instead of having a board per se, or group of people, we felt that maybe that we can just do one-on-one sessions with some people.
So you don't wanna be productive? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping that it'll be more productive, instead of people speaking, saying the same thing, or arguing about whatever, if that's the right.
Or feel pressure, or.
Right.
Just a chance to sit and chat.
I don't, I don't think it really should be an argument, I think it's a discussion in a way.
Well, absolutely.
What we should do to get there, I mean, I don't.
We're looking for.
More input we can get on that route.
And we're, we're looking for the X P, expertise of.
I think.
People like you, 'cause we're not road agents, scare brokers, stuff, so, so that's what we're thinking, so we'd like to spend an hour with you, so I don't know what works for you.
I can give you. More about our units.
We, we were looking like a Tuesday or a Wednesday, and again, whatever the time they're in, I don't know if you wanna go like in an early evening, or.
If you only do like a Wednesday, we could do maybe like a five-thirty or some, maybe even a five, if it's planned out far enough, I can, so for like next.
Whatever works with Chuck, 'cause if he wants some late in the afternoon, five or maybe, you know.
Yeah.
You wanna go the tenth, which is a week from this Wednesday, or do you wanna?
No, we got a conservation meeting that night.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I know, but if we do, what if we stick, can we?
If we did it five-thirty?
If we did it five-thirty, six-thirty, and you're ready for the conservation?
That's all right.
Two for seven or something like that?
And we'll roll right into the next one?
Yeah.
What date is that?
The tenth.
What time is it?
Five-thirty.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think from my angle, it's gonna be more of an information thing than you guys, I already spoke with Dave.
Yeah.
Just a little bit true to that, if I act for, had that conversation with you before.
All right, can you?
Yeah.
The worst, the worst thing is, they didn't really give you enough time to have a good solid concrete plan put together, to actually start working.
Right, and then we can, I mean, some of the things too, is maybe discuss with you a little bit, like what, what your thoughts are on the five-year plan, you know, and there's some other people we'd like to talk that I've talked to, that are budgetary people, you know, that look at the money things, capital improvement thing, you know, that, so, and hopefully we can put something together that's good for the town, for everybody's advice, absolutely.
I was just wondering, what happened isn't a bad thing, the way it happened was wrong, you know, but.
It happened.
This, this way it will happen.
Yeah.
No doubt. One way. Sure. Yep.
And I think that's good.
Perfect, sounds good to me. You owe me more.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Have a good night.
Yep. That's made up for time. You guys ready, if we can, swear, John, in?
Decide to sign before we go in first.
Ready to break the bike out?
Oh, no. No, not yet. 'Cause if I do, it'll snow.
Don't do it then.
I love jinxes.
I do believe in jinxes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, the board has now signed, making you a full member.
Okay.
Of zoning board.
All right, can I take a hell?
I won't thank you.
The swearing thing?
Yeah.
All right, cool. So full board now, right?
Yep.
Yeah, cool, all right.
I need his leadership.
Well, we'll see what happens at the next meeting here. Yeah, I'm.
Thank you.
I'm gonna do my best to avoid quagmire here on some of this stuff.
No, I don't think you have to worry.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, we'll follow the procedures and the law the way it's supposed to be, as my.
Great.
My guidance, well, at least whatever on the law to do, so.
It's what we need.
Right, well, thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
Knock them off. So the next one, the next one is Buzzwall Property?
Yep, I go back to my office after our work session, and I had a phone message from Lenny, Karen, and I told him that I wanted to bring it up tonight, so that it's official and it's in the minutes. I do have a copy of a deed that Town Council drew up, however, he did not have information from the tax office about 2013 through 17 taxes. I know that there was an amount of nine thousand dollars.
2013 through 17?
Yeah, so I need to talk with Lenny tomorrow about that, I looked at Tax Collect, I have, I can view Tax Collect, I can't really get in, I can't print anything, so I really need to sit with Lenny tomorrow and figure out the numbers.
Final.
Yeah.
Final.
And I told Lenny that I would call him tomorrow and let him know.
The final number.
What we had decided tonight, and that I needed to talk to Lenny.
2013 to 2017.
Yeah.
Does the individual, in any case, and this is from my information, do they pay any type of legal fees or anything that we occur to be able to have the transition of properties? Or is it just a, is it just a tax?
I think it's just, well, the board can decide on whether to assess a ten percent increase, that's pretty steep, so you probably could add enough so that it covers fees.
Been told that he meant it, no.
Depends on how bad he wants it. Thought I brought that down, I know I had it with me, I hope I didn't put it in your pockets.
I'm sure the attorneys don't probably do an attorney's attorney, huh? Want to do that?
Um, oh, here, this right here. So this is from Town Council. As for the purchase price, the town has the right to recover all back taxes and interest, including those years when the town has held the property, and that's thirteen through, so. He says, I do not know what the taxes were for 2013 through 17, so it's not possible to calculate the interest totals due for those years, that said, the relevant information for tax years, 2010 to 2012 is as follows, and that is a total of nine thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars.
And was all, was all the town?
This includes the taxes and interest accrued through October 31st, 2018. If there are any prior recording costs or other expenses that the town incurred with respect to maintaining the property, those are also recoverable and would be added to the nine thousand two hundred eighty-one total. Finally, the town could also claim the ten percent penalty be added to the charge, but that can be waived if the selectmen see fit. Once you add in the added years, 2013 through 17, the price will be much larger already. Once you add in the added years, 2013 through 17, the price will be much larger already. If you'd like me to calculate those later tax years, please send me the information and I'll crunch the numbers. If, if it chooses, the select board can agree to sell the lot for an amount of less than what would otherwise be due if all taxes were paid. So it's kind of in your court, as to what you want to do, I would say.
I guess let's find the final number of what, what is all that we have.
I'll sit with Lenny tomorrow and we'll figure that out.
We don't have a lot of legal time on this, right?
No.
Yeah.
No.
So, I think we'll just, we'll just find the final number and we can make a decision what we want to do.
Okay.
Now, is there any prorated, for this year?
There will be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Sillyville Bog Bridge, covered bridge, abutment shifting.
You have that information in your packets. I got an email from Charlie Darlin last week, he kindly waited until town meeting was over, and life had simmered down a little bit around here.
I've got one of these, I think I've got three, four pole things, petition, do I have that?
You should have. Do you have that, why didn't you do that there, Dave?
And I've got four.
Well, I'll read what Charlie says.
All right.
Now the town meeting has come and gone, there's a matter that the select board should probably dig into. Last October, I was showing an out-of-town friend the Sillyville Bog Bridge, and I noticed that the east corner of the north abutment showed some pretty significant movement. Not being an expert in these matters, I contacted Mark Stetson, he and I served on the Sillyville Bog Bridge Committee for years, and we asked Alan Hanscom to take a look at it. We met with Alan at the bridge on February 10th, details of that meeting are here, and I have printed them. His very helpful February 6th email with important photos is here. My goal in all this was not to raise the alarm if what I saw wasn't really that significant, but since both Mark and Alan agreed that it is indeed significant, they've asked me to convey all this info to the select board, along with an offer from Mark and me, to be of any help we can to the select board in sorting this out. I hope this information is helpful, Charlie. We do have pictures. Alan outlined his thoughts on what might be a suitable repair. First was to crib up the northwest corner of the bridge, to take the weight off that corner of the abutment, re-level that corner of the bridge, and allow for shoring up the big boulders of the abutment, so they don't shift during work. Next was dig by hand 12 to 18 inches deep under the compromised abutment in successive small rectangles in order to pour fiber reinforced concrete footings. The next, if it seems physically and economically feasible, working our way across the entire width of the west abutment would be great, if not, then the footings go just under the damaged area. When footings are done, place rip raft at the toe, more and bigger than what is currently there. Perhaps finding a way to redirect high water so it doesn't get between the west abutment and the huge boulder at the west end of the stream would help prevent future problems. We discussed all the major steps that would make up the project. Since the bridge and the road is owned by the town, this is a town project. If the select board wants to help with the project, it should probably reinstate the Sillyville Bog Bridge Committee for liability reasons, et cetera. Because the scope of work might fall within what is appropriate for the end of our highway department to perform, the road agent should probably be looped into the discussion at some appropriate point. Alan is going to do some preliminary sketches that will probably contribute to the DES permitting process. As part of the DES permit, we need an engineer's stamp on a drawing. If the committee is involved, it could probably handle most of the rest of the DES permitting process. Question, will DES stipulate that there be mitigation? Costs, $1,000 for DES permit, $10,000 to $15,000 for the work. Possible sources, there's about $1,000 in the bridge's town account. And then taxes, donations, oh, and L chip, I mentioned L chip to you, and other grants. Possible ways of getting work done, and or highway department, contract with the DOT Bridge Maintenance Crew, and do an RFP to local contractors, no need for big out-of-town firms. Did I give you guys the pictures?
I'm looking at it. I don't have a copy of it.
He doesn't have a check.
That you do now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I guess somebody to look at, looks like they've done some work. I'm sure a lot of research and good pictures and stuff to show, so, I guess we can bring John in the loop. See what his thought processes are, and then, it's a funding deal.
Yeah, which gets, which reinstates the committee, or resurrects the committee.
Yeah, we'll need to do that.
You think you, you think you can give John much more heat when the time do as you got now?
Well, no, but, well, they've asked to, to bring him, to bring him in as far as the thought process, I agree with you, sometimes it's, it's better off to.
I'd get the DOT Bridge Crew in.
Yeah.
And we only got so much time and so many hours in a day.
Yeah.
And it's mounting up fast.
John?
Yeah.
Well, I, I'd be lucky to be doing what you got now.
So, yeah, let's get the committee going, back up, and then we can say we're willing to do the research on what we have for grants and stuff like that. And see if we need to go back to town meeting or whatever for additional funds to repair it, make sure we don't lose it.
So how much do you estimate the engineering would be?
$10,000, $15,000.
$10,000, $15,000.
$10,000 to $15,000? For the engineering?
No, the engineering was $1,000 for the permitting, for the permitting, yeah.
They would have granted there anyway, so. A little bit of seed money, if you want.
Not much at all.
Maybe we'll get that, you know, permitting process started.
Yeah, that takes a while, so we do need to get that going.
So we can see what we have for. You said that was the L chip?
Yeah.
And that's a leg of granting?
I'll research that this week.
Are they more for, for historical type things?
Yeah, they helped do it before, in fact, there's a plaque on the bridge, saying that L chip assisted.
Something else to add on that? Bill, are you all set with that?
Yep.
Next, we're going to pole amendments.
Pole amendments.
Which is electrical poles, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
I have a petition for the board to amend the pole and conduit licenses. That's the, the petition is the first step in the process. The next is public hearing, which is scheduled for the 15th, which is our next board meeting, so we'll do it at 6 o'clock, if that's okay. That should, it's pretty cut and dry, they've sent pretty good instructions as to what needs to be done. This all, the law changed in January of this year. And in order to have the utility companies provide us with information that can be used for assessing, we have to go through this process. So, first step will be the public hearing, which we will.
Go the other way.
Here we go.
So basically, what we're saying here is just, what do we owe on the poles?
No, what do they owe on the poles? What do the utility companies?
Owe us.
It's all about the process that's going to be used to assess.
Yeah.
Okay.
The utility.
And this may not happen, because it's still pending litigation.
There's still some, yes, there is some, yeah.
So, we're getting our ducks in a row.
Right.
When and if that passes, that we know what our assessment is and what the electric company would.
How many units?
Give us, it'd be like, who paying our taxes, are paying taxes where the poles are.
Okay. Got it.
All about process.
Hold that up?
Yep.
Moving right along.
I had something else on the pole thing, I missed it. Okay. Moving right on.
All right, then we're gonna go over previous minutes.
And I put it all on the agenda back, thank you.
I remember the day, I think the road came in, I think nothing jumped out at either. Good to go?
Yep, I can't see anything.
Looks good.
I'm sorry, that way.
I guess we're gonna vote to approve, the minutes, and those were of, what was the date on that, Bill?
Sorry.
March 18th.
March 18th, yep, our last meeting, it's a move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
I have to say that looking at the minutes from some other towns, their select board needs, Pat does an amazing job, some of them are just more like an agenda than, than minutes, so.
Which covers well, thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, we're moving on to correspondence and signatures, haven't got to sign tonight.
Not a lot tonight, you won't have very much. There is, an intent to cut. It's on Memorial Road. Right down here, any of those ones, if there are five of them there. And we'll make sure that John sees that, because of the roads, roads, and the season. And this is another intent to cut on, oh, no, I'm sorry, intent to excavate, need to open my eyes, from John Olver on Memorial Hill Road, and that's just an annual, we had an annual last meeting too, I think, was an intent to excavate. This is a gravel tax levy, $38.08.
Living large.
Yeah. And this is another gravel tax levy for $30. And that's all I have.
You have to push them on top, I need to hear.
Thank you.
Anything else in there?
Oh, would you decide on meet, meeting again, on Monday noon again?
Yeah, we can do that, um.
This coming week?
Yeah, do it times five.
12:30?
You wanna do 12 or 12:30?
Moment.
Mark, what do you do for lunch, as far as, do you want?
I should just eat at my desk, it's fine, it's fine, I eat while I work.
You wanna go to school?
We'll make it a little longer.
Why don't you do noon time?
Okay.
I'll get some.
We'll do noon, I'll get some things out, and we can, I can obviously, hour, but, yeah, watching them go back to work, yeah.
We'll start to fill in these dates with these meetings, is 5:30 up here?
That's fine.
Okay.
Or if we're talking to people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I can, I mean, it's only leaving a little bit early, and I can generally get stuff from the Pato or phone or whatever, so that's fine with me, so.
And who, who wants to make the contacts? I'll sit.
I will.
Okay, I'll sit with you and go through the schedule, or, you know, just to make sure if one says, I can't make it this day, and just, you know, and build it.
Okay, so, that'll be fine.
You think we should space maybe 10 or 15 minutes apart?
Oh, absolutely, give us a little bit of time for breathing.
Yeah, I mean, so they're not running into each other too.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe fifteen minutes apart.
Agreed.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we'll need to breathe it too, just to, you know, warm our nose, make sure...
Right.
Yep, have a question.
Yeah.
We're a question.
That's actually...
So, line up for that, so I guess we can adjourn. Everybody, any more questions?
Oh, I do, um, a meeting with Toby and John, you see Toby more frequently, you wanna mention to him, and then we can...
Yeah.
Hold them together, okay? And, Mark, just let me know, who do you wanna make those calls, and I'll come in.
Okay.
Probably sooner the better.
Exactly.
Excuse me, guy like Jeff Nookum, he, if he, he could be working out of town, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
He's not right now, I don't believe, because I see him go buy the house earlier tonight, or I left, he's down as long as he has.
Yeah.
But he may, you know, good weather creates it, he may be shipped, you never know where he's gonna go.
Exactly.
Yep.
All right.
All right, so, move to adjourn, it is, um, seven thirty-three.
Yep, that's pretty good, actually.
I need a second.
Second.
Phil's second day.
Aye, big one. Okay.
Okay.
Good to go, absolutely.